To the city council meeting tonight. The agenda for a regular meeting of the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, August 3rd, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. Please rise for invocation by Councilman, by Mayor Pro Tim Steve Davis and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we just come for you now and we thank you for this opportunity to be here and do business for this city. We thank you for your soul in all things, guidance and leadership over this country, over this state and over this city. And we ask that you be with us now, help us to make decisions that are pleasing to you and for the best benefit of our city. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the prayer. I pledge...
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parsons. Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We have six persons.
Thank you. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing nine. Item six, citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven, Spire Gas Company will present the Silver Shovel Award to the Papa Bluff Street Department.
Thank you. My name is Todd Fagan. I am the manager of the right-of-way department for Spire. Would like to thank the council and the mayor for allowing us the opportunity to come here tonight to talk about excavation safety and you guys have been doing a great job with it. So with Spire, one of our core, core attributes that we have to do at the company i- is safety, right? We have our own internal safety department that goes out and inspects all of our crews to make sure we're following our procedures and doing it right. We have our own damage prevention department that goes out and responds to third-party diggings where contractors and municipalities come in and hit our lines to investigate, to make sure what happened and how can that be fixed and prevented in the future and educate those crews. So with our safety department, our safety program, one of the things we want to do is recognize the public works departments that are doing it right, that are working around our gas lines in a safe and responsible manner. So we came up with the Silver Shovel Award, kind of tough to say sometimes, but we came up with the award, and that is to recognize public works departments that are doing it right and the municipalities that serve, that we serve into our, into our service territory. So one of the criteria for this is you have to be within our service territory, you have to be a member of Missouri One Call, follow its statutes and its rules and regulations, and you have to have no at-fault damages in 2019. So this is the first year we're giving away this award. This is actually the first city that we're giving away, so that's awesome. So in 2019, Papa Bluff Public Works Department had over 210 call-ins, locate requests, and within those did not have any at-fault damages for the entire year of 2019. So congratulations to you guys. We would like to go ahead and give the award to the Public Works Department and thank them for their fine work and their dedication and commitment to safety, and we're hoping this will help other municipalities to follow you guys' lead and to dig around our lives, our lives, our lines in a safe and responsible manner. So thank you very much and congratulations to Papa Bluff. And we are hoping to come back in 2020 to add another plate on there to just keep, keep that excellence going.
Todd said these also came with Cardinal season tickets.
Cardinal season tickets, the box, everything, but that's why you got to win it in 2020, right? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. That's wonderful. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. A, the city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the sale of property located at Baron Road and Ball's Land. Mr. Bill Bach.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the farmer side of the Ball Lane Water Tower. Council, remember, this was torn down last year. We looked at the electric and the water sewer departments and we no longer have a need for the property. This was discussed at the advisory board today and would recommend the sale of this property. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do you have a buyer yet?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a buyer for it?
The neighbor, I know one of the neighbors expressed interest.
Okay.
Make a motion to move this to the voting session, be held on the 17th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item B, the city council will review a bid recommendation for network maintenance equipment. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our RIT director, Michael Pry, had requested that we go out to bid for a piece of equipment that serves as a backup. So basically, the piece of equipment is called the Storage Area Network, or SAN, and it's a box of hard drives. Device is the core storage device for the entire city network. Every piece of data that's stored is, every piece of data that the city stores is stored on this device. Every document, every voicemail, every entry in every database, including utility billings and financial records, are all stored on this device. If this device were to crash, we would have some serious problems retrieving our data. Mr. Bach actually had budgeted for this item in his current budget. We did go out for bids. We received one bid from today's computer for $49,000. And I would, like I said, Mr. Bach had budgeted for this. It was a piece of equipment that we knew was going to need to be replaced.
Are we certain that's what the bid was, 49,000?
Yes.
Was there only one bidder?
There was only one bidder. It was posted for bid in several different locations and they were the only ones that responded.
Thirty-nine, Matt.
I'm sorry. Thirty-nine thousand.
Of course, I'm not familiar with that equipment, but I would guess, Mr. Bach, that's probably a reasonable, reasonable price for that equipment.
Substantially less than what he budgeted for.
Yeah, Michael could talk in better detail about this. So as Mr. Winters said, it backs up all the data. It actually allows us to do the online, do all our receipts daily. But, and I'm going to get part of this wrong, you know, we moved away from some of the modules that we've had, and so originally we budgeted, I want to think it was...
Two-ten, I think.
Yeah, two-ten, I thought. It was something outrageous before. And we've been able to move away some of, some of the features that we no longer need and get this down. And actually, the unit is still a SAN's unit. It's made by the same manufacturer.
Yes.
And then they worked with us, they, they gave us an extended on the warranty. We were out of the, the protection, service protection. They worked with us while we were going out to bid, tried to keep what we have up and running. So yeah, it's drastically came down from where we started at. And some of that was, we got rid of the BMUs or something, right?
That's right. Get Michael up here talking and knowing us. Yeah, we did make some changes in the network to bring that cost down to a lot more reasonable than what was originally estimated.
But like Matt said, it's, it's a needed piece of equipment and it's reached its turn, its end of life. And when that dies, we're going to be, if we don't have something running, then we're really in trouble.
That's right.
Thank you.
Motion is, motion is being moved to August 17th voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item C, the city council will discuss the acceptance of a grant awarded to the Papa Bluff Police Department by the Missouri Department of Public Safety Office, Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of upgraded 911 system. Patrolman Lemons.
Mayor, City Manager, council members. Austin Lemons, Papa Police Department, Level 11 Poplar. Back in March, I presented a 911 grant that we were going to apply for through the Missouri Department of Public Safety Office, Homeland Security. The number that I shot you that day was 280, or $250,000, which would have made the city portion $100,000. Since then, we've had to do some tweaking with the numbers. The federal government is very particular on what they will and will not pay for. So we actually got that down to $208,000, which makes the city portion would be $83,213.48. We have been approved for that money. The reason why I'm in front of you today is because we have to sign a sub-award agreement, which would, that is basically how we get our money. I'm willing to answer any questions you have. If I don't know it specifically, I can get that, get that answer to you independently.
See, I mean, this would upgrade our current 911 system to the more advanced, and Patrolman Lemons could speak to the details of exactly what this new 911 system does to replace our old one that's, that's being outdated and to get the most substantial part of that paid for through the state of Missouri. It's actually, the state receives a grant from the federal government and then the state then sub-grants it out to local municipalities, and that's where we're in right now. Like you said, y'all approved the grant submission and we got notified that we were awarded, so...
I think everybody here was here except Councilman Taylor, is that correct? Okay, were you here as well? Okay, okay, perfect. But yeah, basically, our, our current system is 12 years old. They no longer make any troubleshooting support, technical support, anything to that extent. You can no longer get any parts for it. So if it goes down, we no longer have 911 system in Papa Bluff. Everything gets transferred over to the county and they do not have the manpower to take the 911 calls that we currently take at the PD. This is going to give us, it's called Next Generation 911. It's going to give us the latest and the greatest. I've been in contact with two different companies that have supplied quotes for us. One is Central Squared, one is Solocom. I actually have sole source justification for both of them, and Solocom is also on the state contract. So when it comes to bidding and all of that, Mr. Winters will be, I, I just found out some of that today, so that's why I wanted to bring it up. But yes, ultimately, it's something that, it's going to take our current legacy system to a next generation 911 system, to where it's going to further our public safety providing to the citizens of Papa Bluff. And like you said, I can go into detail all day long, but I'm sure you guys don't want to be here all night on that. Any questions for me?
Any questions, anyone? Think it's a good idea. Think it would.
I'll make a motion and move this to the voting session to be held on August 17th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item D, the city council will discuss deleting section 405.050, 12B of the Code of Ordinances relative to conditional use permit requirements for drive-in establishments, including restaurants and theaters. Mr. Winters.
So this conversation Mark Richardson and I have had a few different times. As part of our ordinances right now, anyone that opens a, any business that has a drive-up window, whether it's a restaurant, or a bank, or a gas station, they're required to go through planning and zoning, request a conditional use permit, and then that recommendation from city council is, from planning and zoning is then passed on to you for your final approval. So it typically adds, you know, about two months to the process of someone opening a new business or converting a new business or what have you. You know, I've looked at a lot of cities similar to our size in, around the state, around this part of the state, and really, we're about the only ones I can find that, that put that requirement on a business. Drive-ups are typically pretty standard and, you know, my time serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission as a volunteer and then my time with the city, there's never been one denied. You know, where the, the planning department and the inspection departments were already approving site plans and stormwater plans and architectural plans, and this is just a part of that process that would, would make it easier on developers, not having to wait that extra two months as, as part of their process. It's also a more typical practice when you look at other municipalities around the state and how they handle drive-up windows. So by taking this out, that would just take that step in their process out. So when a developer submits plans for a business that has a drive-up window, that would be reviewed and handled internally by the planning department, by the building inspector, so... I'm just asking that that be, that section be revised and that specific line item under the conditional use, conditional uses for the C2 General Commercial District be removed.
I can make a motion, send this to the voting session, the 17th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item E, the city council will review bids received for the replacement of an aircraft hangar door at the Papa Bluff Regional Business Airport.
I'll let Mr. Pride speak on this. The airport manager, he's been involved with it and handling it, and he can give you some more details about the door and the need to replace it and, and the bids that we've received on it. Mr. Pride.
That microphone's a little loud. Members of the council, City Manager Winters asks that I be present this evening to convey to you the urgency of a repair to one of our main hangars at the airport. The hangar in question was built back in the 80s and houses three aircraft, which, if you combine their net worth, are just around a million dollars. The hangar has served the airport extremely well, but as with any mechanical device, wear and tear and the elements of weather have had their toll on the moving steel parts of the hangar door. The hangar itself is in excellent shape, however, the mechanical bifold door has been actually declining for several years. And quite frankly, it's breaking about every 45 days now. We've been in, we've been making some in-house repairs on the cables, but the frame, the door hinges and the actual frame of the door, quite frankly, are about to come apart. The door is actually broken at this very moment, and it simply has to be replaced. Now, we have made a successful bid to replace the aged door with a modern, state-of-the-art, hydraulically operated door, which eliminates all cables. It should give us 30 to 40 more years out of the building. The new door is at least 70 feet wide and over 18 feet tall, and it will actually help us to house larger aircraft, which are wanting to be based at our airport. The low bidder has been in the door business for over 20 years and frequently installs this particular door that we've requested. They've assured us of an expeditious installation if we get approval, because when they conducted their onsite inspection, they actually witnessed our critical need. Honestly, I'm fearful to operate the present door, and I believe it only has a few more up-and-down motions left on it before it simply collapses. We were trying to get as much use out of this door as we possibly could, and we were trying to make it to the end of the year. However, we're just simply not going to, to make it to the end of the year. So I would strongly recommend urgent action upon the part of the council to get this critical operational condition fixed and, and favorably resolved.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Pride? In your packet is the bid tabulation sheets. He did receive two bids, as he mentioned. The low bidder was, was 49,790, and then the second, the only other bidder was, was $83,000, so... This is a critical need at the airport that does need to be addressed before we, I would hate to see us have a plane damaged out there or an employee injured, so...
Make a motion, move this to the voting session, be held tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Pride.
Thank you.
Item nine, action required items. AA, bill number 8248. The city council will take action on an ordinance establishing procedures for the disclosure of potential conflict of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion for first reading of bill number 8248.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance establishing a procedure for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers.
Motion for second reading of bill 8248.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance establishing a procedure for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons? Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Bill number 8248 is adopted. Item BB, bill number 8249. City council will take action on a cell tower height request at 1017 Ridge Avenue.
Motion for first reading of bill 8249.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing network real estate, an agent of AT&amp;T, to erect a permanent telecommunications cell tower located at 1017 Ridge Avenue in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of bill 8249.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing network real estate, an agent of AT&amp;T, to erect a permanent telecommunications cell tower located at 1017 Ridge Avenue in Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for adoption.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons? Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you.
Bill number 8249 is adopted. Item CC, bill number 8250. The city council will take action on an ordinance amending the 2020 annual budget.
Motion for first reading of bill 8250.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the 2020 fiscal year budget for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the 2020 fiscal year budget for the city of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of bill 8250.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parsons? Councilman DeGerris?
No.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Bill number 8250 is adopted. Item DD, bill number 8251. The city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the replacement of an aircraft hangar door at the Papa Bluff Regional Business Airport.
Motion for first reading of bill 8251.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid from Thatch Construction, Inc. of Ravendon Springs, Arkansas, for the replacement of an aircraft hangar door at the Papa Bluff Regional Business Airport.
Motion for second reading of bill 8251.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting a bid from Thatch Construction, Inc. of Ravendon Springs, Arkansas, for the replacement of an aircraft hangar door at the Papa Bluff Regional Business Airport.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you, Clerk Phelps. Bill number 8251 is adopted. Item EE, the city council of the city of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law in Section 16.21.1, .2, .3, .9, .11, .12, .13, and .14, revised statute of Missouri, following the city manager's report. Do we have a, do we have a motion to move into closed session?
So...
Second.
Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Parsons? Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to congratulate Jerry Lawson, the street department, on their award, on their award for the, for the Silver Shovel Award from Spire Gas. You know, it's good that they get recognized for the hard work that they do. Also, last week, if you saw in the newspaper, Police Chief Danny Whitley was invited to be one of four virtual panelists for a U.S. Senate caucus meeting to discuss community policing. He was invited by U.S. Senator Roy Blunt, Chairman, and Senator Chris Coons, co-chairman of the Senate Judiciary Caucus. The panel included Chief Whitley, Greg Mullin, who's the police chief of Clemson University Police Department, Bishop Mark Talbert, who's the chairman of the Kansas City Board of Police Commissioners, and Reverend Donald Morton, the executive director of the Complexity Coalition of Delaware, and it was moderated by Dr. Karen Amendola, the chief behavioral scientist out of Arlington, Virginia. I thought it was a, a nice honor of our chief to be included in that small group, to be invited by our U.S. Senator Roy Blunt. Got to go down and provide some more... Got to go down and provide some moral support while he was virtually participating in the discussion. It was a good discussion, and it's good that, you know, not only the street department, but our police chief too are recognized as excelling in their fields, and not just locally, but also nationally. The last thing I wanted to say is tomorrow is Election Day. You know, we have lots of heated races going on tomorrow. I encourage everybody to get out to vote. I think it's your civic duty and also a great right that we have in this country to get out and vote. A lot of people can be impacted by our local elections. You know, we see in our daily lives the impact of local elections a lot more than we do nationally sometimes, so I encourage everybody to get out and vote tomorrow, exercise that right that we were given. That's all I have, sir.
Any further comments from the council? At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Adjourn. We'll take a five minute...